Welcome to everyone in attendance this evening. We thank you for coming down tonight.
I represent the city.
That's right. For the March 5th, 2018 work session, the Falls Church City Council. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. So, tonight's work session, we have Paul Stoddard here to engage again with the council on the council work plan. A couple of things I'll just say at the outset. We have tried to bring to council kind of everything that happened at your retreat, and so it's all there, and it's all in pretty raw form. We have put it into the buckets that we described relating to vibrancy, relating to affordability, relating to resilience and sustainability, and areas of core government services and capital investments. So, we've started to organize it, but we've tried to have all of the content there that was discussed. So, tonight, Paul is going to kind of, we'll continue the discussion with you, and we want your feedback on this. I will note at the beginning that we will come back to you in two weeks with some additional work on this, and we'll also have more staff work on this in terms of these sort of ideas on how we will accomplish them, resources that would be needed, and also, we might come to the table some things that we know, we think are probably going to need to be on the council's work plan that you should be mindful of that might not be here yet. So, I wanted to note that, so we'll be back on March 19th. And the goal is to have council adopt this so that we can focus our efforts on implementation rather than on planning at your meeting at the end of March. And I'll also note at the outset that Paul is staffing the planning commission, and so the goal is to have this about bracketed in about an hour discussion. If it needs to go beyond that, then I will, we will try to record the conversation after that, but we'll release Paul to go to the planning commission. They're having some of their retreat discussion tonight. They're having a two-step retreat, and this is the first night of that. They also have CPACE and a couple other good things on the planning commission agenda.
They probably have food also. Is that the, is that why you're heading off?
Food is tomorrow night, or, sorry, two weeks' time.
Yeah, okay. Is a way to use the city's leaning, tax lien ability to help finance sustainability or energy improvements in buildings, solar panels and things like that.
There's, it's a, if I could just briefly.
You'd describe it better than I do.
From a classic sort of planning paradigm, it's solving a market failure that environmental systems pay for themselves over time, but there's no financing to make that happen. So, even though there are good things from a community's perspective and a money perspective, there's no money to make them happen. And so, CPACE is public financing that can be available to bridge that gap and bring those systems in line without hitting developers on the bottom line where it makes it difficult to get financing.
So, what, two other things just by way of introduction. EDA also had their retreat on Friday, and so we'll carry some of that discussion into your discussion as well. And then, lastly, it's not on the agenda, but I think after Paul has left, we could also just have a quick review of the windstorm and actions that have been taken and just sort of an after-action with council on that. So, with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stoddard.
Before we do, I just want to mention that Dan Zee is feeling under the weather, and so will not be joining us, but he is ill. So, anyway, Mr. Stoddard, welcome and congratulations on your new role. I think we're all delighted to have you.
Thank you, sir.
In that position. I think you're going to do a fantastic job, so.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited about the opportunity, and I know the reorganization of bringing the planning staff and the economic development staff is going to be a good move for the city, especially as we embark on this effort up at the West Falls Church project. I think now is a good time to have those two functions working more closely together than ever. So, I'm excited about the reorganization. Of course, personally, I'm excited about my new role in the department. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Before you tonight, as Wyatt said, this is the first of two work sessions for the council to review its 2018-2019 work plan. I'm going to step through some of the highlights in the staff report, but throughout all of this, what I want to do is get back to two questions. Is the draft work plan talking about the right themes and issues around which council wants to have a conversation over the next two, two-and-a-half years? And also, within those issues, are the right items highlighted in terms of things that need to have progress made first? As Wyatt mentioned, schedule will come back for another work session on the 19th, and then action is expected on March 26th at the end of this month. There will also be a director's retreat, a staff-level retreat with directors this week on Thursday. So, what we'll have for that next work session is not only your feedback incorporated into the draft work plan, but also input from the directors, and that's what's going to allow us to get to a delivery schedule as well as identifying lead departments. Recommendation, of course, staff is asking council to review the work plan tonight and to think about the work plan as a way of identifying focus areas, that the work plan and the budget, in a sense, are, go hand-in-hand in terms of documents that the council creates, that the budget is about providing resources to get work done, the work plan is about providing direction. There was an example at the retreat given of how the work plan can be that guiding pulse of policy development. So, a couple of years ago, it was on transportation and walkability, and a number of improvements have been made in that area. And so, this draft work plan is structured around a different set of elements that were identified during the retreat. The work plan, of course, is not a standalone document. It's a two-and-a-half-year work plan, and that's set within the context of the city's longer-term vision, which was adopted in the Falls Church 2040 Plan. The vision statement is captured there on lines 37 through 45 of the staff report. I won't read them out because I've read them out a number of times over the last several events. Also associated with the vision is, are those eight core values that the city's driving for on lines 48 through 55. Those eight core values, small-town character in an urban setting, and then the three legs of sustainability, economic, environmental, and social, that those things have to work in balance to have a complete community. And then, core government services, education, mobility and accessibility, some people call it transportation, public health and safety, and then responsive and accountable governance. In terms of inputs that got this draft work plan to where it is tonight, there were three inputs into it. So, the first was board and commission priorities. Council set out a request to boards and commissions in advance of the retreat to ask for board and commission priorities for 2018. That's included in the attachment, and that was used to fuel some of the input into the draft work plan. Second in terms of inputs was the council retreat itself, where there was some good feedback and some good framing and structure for the work plan. And then, third was staff judgment to pull it all together. So, the draft methodology that was used to get to the draft work plan tonight was as follows. First, frame the draft work plan around those themes that were identified at the council retreat. Those themes were vibrancy, and then, as a group, affordability, vulnerability, and accessibility. Third was resilience and sustainability, then core government services, and finally, capital investment. So, those were the five framing features of the work plan that came out of the retreat. Next up was populating the work plan with the specific items that council had dot-voted. As you all may remember, there was an exercise where council was given, each council member was given three dots, and they could place those on the most important efforts that they saw over the next two years. Those items were all highlighted in, it either showed up as blue or gray in your printouts, but essentially, it's the highlighted items. Third was then adding items that were actionable in those board and commission priorities. Some board and commission priorities were not necessarily actionable. They were themes, or policies, or directions, but not necessarily actionable steps. So, the things that were actionable steps got translated into the work plan. Those are either highlighted in white or absent highlighting, depending on your frame of view. And then, the fourth item was shifting some of these things around. So, if you look within each framework, you'll see some items that are left justified and some that are indented to the right. Staff assessment was used to try and guide which items are left justified, and that would mean items that are going to get completed, or could probably get completed in the next two-and-a-half years. Items that are indented, even if they got a council dot vote, the staff assessment was that they may be more deserving of a follow-on action to maybe something that comes first. So, that was the methodology used to produce the draft work plan. As I mentioned, next steps, looking for feedback from council tonight on those two specific questions. Is this framed correctly, and are the right items in that first batch? One of the end goals for this work plan is to end up with about 20 items in that top batch to get done in the first two years. There are 18 items right now in the top batch, and so, a lot of this may be trade-offs in terms of what's most important versus what could perhaps wait for a future year's work. The last section I'll touch on is fiscal impact. The work plan itself, adopting it, doesn't have a fiscal impact, but of course, there are items in here that may require funding, and that would be addressed either with existing resources or through the budget development process. With that, that's the end of my presentation, and now I'm hoping we can open this up to a conversation and discussion about the draft work plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Looks like you guys have done a fair amount of work after our retreat, so we thank you for that. Comments, questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thanks, Paul. Thank you for summarizing the retreat. A clarifying question. You said, are targets 20 items kind of in the work plan based on kind of what we think is achievable? Is that the left justified ones?
Yes, that is the left justified.
So, the total of the left justified should be 20, and so, that's why we made the cut of the right justified ones are the ones that we don't think we can get done in the next two years, or might need other things done first.
Correct. It's a combination of how long those items might take and whether some of the items that are left justified might be more appropriate to happen first.
Got it, okay. So, just some general comments. I think they're probably the right buckets. I think we'll, as we get further in the conversation, we'll have a sense of whether they're the right ones. If we come up with individual items that don't fit in any ones, then we'll say, oh, this theme's like missing theme, but for now, they seem like it captured everything. So, I'm fine with them. When I look through the stuff that's left justified, and even some of that's right justified, some are definitely very actionable, project-specific, and some are very broad focus areas, like revenue up 5%. I'll pick on that one. I'm sure Mr. Duncan likes having that one on there, so we won't take it out. But that, I imagine, requires a bunch of different actions that we should be taking to get revenue up 5%. And even, you know, much of it's probably even out of our control. So, I contrast that versus, you know, like a, we need flower baskets lining all the city streets. Clearly, we can, you know, put money against that and do it if it's a priority. So, what's our sense of, you know, where between those two ends of the spectrum should we be? Should it be more of those project-based ones? Should it not be? I'd love staff's input on that.
So, you're right, that these things are on a different scale, and some of that, as Wyatt mentioned, is because we're trying to, staff is trying to bring back the raw inputs that we've received so far. There is going to be a director's retreat, as I mentioned, this Thursday, and specifically that item, revenue up 5%, is one that we have been putting our heads together about how would we structure that differently in terms of what would that mean as an action item over the next two years. The reason we kept it as revenue up 5% is because that was the literal string that we took away from, the literal sentence that we took away from the retreat itself. So, I think what you'll see in the next work plan is that some of these things may be reworded a little bit, and we can explain how we did that to get to the next work session. I think the important thing is that if revenue up 5% is important to you all as a group, keep it in there, and if there are items that are a little bit fuzzy or need more specificity, highlight that as well, and that can be a focus at the staff retreat.
Yeah. I guess my bias would be more actionable-based ones, because revenue up 5% is just hard to say like, oh, are we making progress on that if, like, we go into recession? It just seems like something, a macro thing that we can't control. And so, I prefer, you know, that might be a pipeline question, like, maybe it's X-number of projects through the economic development pipeline, which enables revenue up 5% and keeping budget that, you know, whatever. It's just something that we can track to and kind of hold ourselves accountable to versus revenue up 5%. It seems hard to feel like we're successful, I guess, if there's macro economy things going on. And then, related to what Mr. Shields said, my other kind of broad question is the budget implications. So, clearly, we're having separate budget discussions. This is the documented priorities. The budget is, you know, how are we going to accomplish those priorities? As it stands now, is everything left justified what we think we can get done in the current budget? Or that's basically based on the director's offsite that's coming up? I was kind of curious how we did the left justified versus right justified, and how that mixes with essentially budget.
It was not a, there's not a direct line drawn between, you know, on budget. I think there will probably need to be some prioritization in terms of what staff is doing.
Okay. So, even left justified stuff may not get it all done within what you think the FY19 budget will look like.
That's right.
That's fair. Thank you. That's it for my broad questions. We'll probably talk more.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thank you very much for all of this, Mr. Stoddard. It's a lot of information to distill down, and you've done a pretty good job starting out.
Thank you. It was not, I did not do it by myself. Of course, Shelley Maesling, who couldn't be here tonight, did a lot of the legwork to pull this all together in such a short amount of time.
So, you said we had two-and-a-half years to accomplish this? Is it two-and-a-half or one-and-a-half?
The reason for two-and-a-half here is that the situation we're in now, of course, is that we're adopting the council work plan in March. And so, thinking about some of these items, sometimes they take more than two years, and so often, the inertia may get created, and then it's moving across the finish line in the first half of the next fiscal year. That happened with a lot of work plan items over the last two previous work plans that we saw the bulk of the work got done, and then it still needed to get to final action.
So, then, do we want to say till 2020? The top says council initiatives, the very first line, council initiatives 2018 to 2019. Higher than that even.
Oh, you're taking it, oh, sure, sure. I see what you're saying.
Just to clarify, what's the, and we will adjust it again in two years.
Yes, the other thing we need to clarify.
It's okay to have some overlap there.
Yep. The other thing we need to clarify is that the intention here was calendar year 2018, 1920, which makes sense in terms of budget implications, because of course, the first two quarters of calendar year 2020 are the last two quarters of fiscal year 2020.
Right, right. Okay. So, as I look at this, I was struck sort of similar to what Ms. Hardy just said, that some of it is big stuff and some of it is, like, visionary stuff, and then some of it is really practical stuff. And I'm wondering if you might need a, we have the theme or action item, and then call it vibrancy, and then have another subhead under there of, you know, we've got a few in here related to beautification, wayfinding. Have a subhead that says, we, wayfinding and beautification matters to us, and then these are the three steps we're going to take to accomplish the wayfinding, beautification, or the visitor center, marketing, and what are the three steps, you know, the really tangible things that can be accomplished by staff and city council to accomplish that big goal, to parse it out like that a little bit. And I think almost all of those could, that could work.
Yes, certainly, I can see, especially under the vibrancy theme, as you mentioned, that there are some of these things that are physical improvements or tangible improvements that you would see in touch once you're here.
Yeah.
Some of them might be externally focused about things that are trying to attract people to the city.
Right. And then, over on this one here, you've got affordability, vulnerability, accessibility.
Mm-hmm.
The right indent one, or the indented one there, the first one is billion-dollar deal for West Falls Church site. That really what we're aiming for? If we are, does it belong in this category?
The reason I indented it was to leave a little space to go back and check the dollar figures in terms of where do we land with the RFP process.
It would be nice to get a billion-dollar deal, but I don't know if we will. But does it belong under affordability, vulnerability, or does it belong under capital investments or?
Well, this, this is an area that may need a little bit of work, and I think your subheading idea may help us out as staff in terms of framing the work plan for you all, that some of affordability was that idea of what are the property tax rates looking like for people who have either been long-term residents or who are on a fixed income. Some of the affordability issues were for lower-income households or new households that are trying to get started here in the city. And then, there was also that aspect of revenue. So, are the revenues from the commercial areas relieving some of the burden on the residential areas, rebalancing the tax pie between the two portions of the city, commercial residential? So, I think that idea of subheadings may play very well in this, in terms of separating those things out.
And it seems like some things could actually go under two different buckets, or could go into two buckets.
That's not uncommon with planning items.
Yeah.
Or policy items more generally. The idea that one thing is serving multiple goals, and that's what you want to see, because that means you've got more champions for it.
Right. And then, for capital investment, I do think we need to put the high school and city hall in there.
Yes.
We've got the library, but.
Yeah, I think that's, or yes, sorry. That's, one of the things we were looking at is if this is a change document, is it being included in the work plan because it's something that needs more council review or revision? Is it something that's simply marching along, and council wants to be kept up to date? Does council want input on it? I think that was one of the challenges, but certainly, if there is a desire to see city hall or the campus project included, that can be arranged.
I think there's going to be a lot of staff time going to both of those, so it should be on the work plan.
Well, just on that specifically, yeah. I mean, ideally, we all hope that we'll be sitting here next April, and everything will have gone swimmingly, and, you know, the high school will be ready to break ground, and the market will have come to us with some, you know, number that is in line with what we expect, and off we go. But if, for some reason, those two things don't come into alignment, then this group and every other group in the city is going to be spending all of their time every day and night talking about, you know, what we do. I mean, if, for some reason, the school isn't ready to go, I can't imagine what that would be, or if for some reason, the market doesn't want to front us the amount of money that we expect. Anyway, I think the vice mayor's correct that we should put that, that project particularly, city hall, I suppose, is, you know, going to be done a year from now, but we will still keep checking on it. Let me just think out loud a little bit, which is dangerous, I know, but listening to what Ms. Hardy and the vice mayor said also, I think this is a very helpful document. I'm just jotting down, you know, three areas of the most concern to me and asking myself, you know, is everything I do in service to the three most important things that are identified here that I find to be the things that, you know, I might be able to make a contribution on? And so, I think that's a good exercise. I think it is helpful to have targets that are a little maybe abstract seeming, like 5% revenue growth, just because, you know, if that is one of our priorities, then we arrange our work to try to make that happen. I mean, even, you know, I've done a windshield survey of the city. There's about a dozen existing, you know, storefronts that are in some transition, you know? The previous documents moved out, and the infill hasn't happened yet, and that's not really anything that, you know, we've normally had a lot to do with on the city side. And we don't have to, you know, like, have a department that's solely dedicated to that, but I do think it would be helpful to, you know, have some metrics like existing spaces being filled, you know? Can we get them filled by the end of the fiscal year so we can begin collecting money in the next budget year on them? You know, if there's some phone calls by somebody in the EDO that would encourage a broker to close a deal this month as opposed to next month, then I think that's exactly the kind of thing that we would want to see happen, to make this vision document, you know, have some real teeth to it. Affordability, you referred to all, I think, of the groups that I heard being focused on. That was kind of the main theme that I took away from the visioning, affordability, diversity, community for all generations, you know, across a lot of work areas. That theme came up, not only in housing and, you know, tax policy, but in other areas as well. So, I would encourage us to, you know, keep that as a category in and of itself and try to move as many things to the left justify as we can, you know, rather than study something, you know, can we try a test program and see, you know, if we increased the incentives, or if we increased the limits on relief and abatements, what effect would that have? Does that give us more participation, or is that not something that the community responds to? I think the things we can do in the shorter run than the medium and longer run that respond to increasing concerns that we are becoming what we don't want to be, which is a gated community for the super affluent. I think, you know, what we want to be is what's expressed in all these documents, and, you know, if we want to be that, we're going to have to do some tough things and make some tough choices about how we allocate our public resources. We're going to have to allocate more of it to tax relief, tax abatement, incentives for first-time homebuyers, you know? Just got a note on Facebook, somebody who lives in West Broad found out that their rent is going to increase by $400 when they sign their new lease. I don't know if we have a role in that or not, but again, that kind of thing is out there, and it underscores the urgency, I think, of us acting in these areas. So, again, left justify as much of the work as we can in that area would be my ask. Neighborhood preservation after fiscal health, which is sort of the first thing I talked about, the 5% increase, stable tax rate, affordability, neighborhood preservation, which covers also a lot of areas, but, you know, given that we are making changes here in the economy and on our commercial corridors, and that is having an effect in our residential neighborhoods, traffic calming, I think, needs to be done more and, done more than studied, and resources need to be allocated to make that happen. And local resources, because those are more nimble than the federal grants that we all hope will come along, but, you know, they'll come along in the by-and-by, and the by-and-bye is a little too far down the line for some folks. And the whole mobility for all modes, you know, sidewalks, walking, cycling, transit, new technologies to deliver people from one place to the other. Those are the three areas, fiscal, affordability, neighborhood preservation, that jump out to me. But I think you did a great job of pulling together all the various strands that we communicated on Visioning Day, and so, thank you for your work.
Thank you. In terms of neighborhood preservation, I could see that fitting in a lot of, perhaps a couple of these existing themes. Is that something the council is interested in, the council as a whole is interested in, not because it's not worthy, but I just want to make sure that what we're bringing, what staff is bringing back to you all in two weeks is something that's representing what everybody's looking for in the sense that making sure those top 20, making sure those top 20 items make the list, and that as staff, we have the confidence knowing forward, we're moving forward with a work plan that is shared by the entire council.
I guess I'd want to know, what do you mean by neighborhood conservation?
What I could see in terms of a number of programs that might be successful into this, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, so please correct me if I step out of line here, but I could, I could certainly see neighborhood traffic calming, that part of that is recognizing that automobile traffic should not design our public spaces for us, and certainly not in residential neighborhoods. So, neighborhood traffic calming so that people feel safe walking outside their front doors and crossing the street. That should be an easy thing to do in a city like this. Second, the idea of defining various neighborhoods in the city, that the city is a place that grew up organically over time by subdividing farms and working lands and becoming residential neighborhoods throughout the city. There has been some self-efforts in this arena to put up signs in different parts of the city, and different places have different identities, but it's by their own grit to put these things together. Is that something that public resources could help support? The idea of researching old subdivisions and learning a little bit about what is the history of this place, and how do we tell the next generation what was here before them? And the fact that the reason the streets are laid out the way they are, or the reason these houses look like this versus that, or the era they came from, is a matter of when they were developed and how they were subdivided. So, there's some history we can tell there. We could, I've seen this in other communities where they have walking tours, not just in pamphlets that you can pick up in city hall, but that are identified by signs that you can physically see as you walk the neighborhoods. So, there's a little map that you could, a map and routes that you could walk through different areas of the city and learn not only that this is a historic house, but why is it historic? What's its significance? What did it mean? Who lived here? Who built it? Why, why is that a special place worth remembering? And then, where did I get to? So, that would be neighborhood identity, and also neighborhood gateways, making sure that when transitions happen from predominantly commercial areas to predominantly residential areas, that something happens there, that the design of a place should tell you how to act, that we want people giving residential areas the respect and the calm that they deserve. That's an idea that's been called out in the West Broad Street Small Area Plan. We talked about it in the streetscape standards, that the idea of things like curb extensions and more tree canopy coverage, especially along right-of-way, can have that calming effect and give people that sense that they're in a calmer, quieter. can have that calming effect and give people that sense that they're in a calmer, quieter place.
Yeah, I would say at the minimum, I'd like to see NTC on there. I noted that as well, that NTC was missing from the work plan. I think the other stuff sounds fine. I think when it comes down to it, it's, sometimes it just depends on whether we have money to do it all. So yes, I like the idea of neighborhood gateways, but do we put it in using city dollars? Or do we put it in when we have development that might be happening nearby and it's a VC that we can negotiate? So I think it just frankly, there's going to be a lot of things I imagine will be below the line if we think about, you know, budget implications, so we'll have to be careful of those other things. I think we generally support the idea of them, but I'd probably put it somewhat lower on the list. I'd rather see, for example, more sidewalks put in if we're talking about actual city resources through the neighborhoods. And making sure, you know, we have safe routes to schools and think about expanding like the bus and walk radius, for example, between the schools and where folks live in the community. So anyway, I think I'd like to see at the minimum NTC added, but the other stuff I think is just going to depend on whether we have resources to do it all.
That was well said and better than I could, so I don't need to repeat it. Let me just go back to the fiscal health thing, one thing I meant to bring up. We've done enough projects now over the last 15 years that we have, you know, an excellent sheet that shows the fiscal impact of each of the newer developments. I do think it would be helpful for the community to have, you know, some idea of what a, you know, building the size of West Broad or Northgate or, you know, Kensington, you know, throws off just generally in terms of, you know, is it a, you know, a million-dollar project? If so, we can expect to get, you know, X number of cents on the current tax rate out of it. Just so, you know, for the community's purposes, there is an understanding that when we vote on a project such as Insight, you know, we, some people say, well, you're just doing it because you need the money. Well, it's not the only reason we're doing it, there are many other reasons that we're doing it, but, you know, the fact that it throws off revenue is not an irrelevant consideration. And, you know, if we're going to grow the economy at 5%, that does have implications for how we look at, you know, applicants who bring us projects and the revenue that is associated with those projects. So I do think we need to, we think about that from the very beginning as hard as we think about all the other things that we devote proper care and attention to. You know, how it relates to the neighborhood and, you know, how the sidewalk widths are and so forth, all, you know, what's in the ground floor. Those are all very important things, but the amount of revenue is an equally important consideration.
There is certainly a language that our communities have used, the idea of a triple bottom line, looking at all three aspects of the sustainability triangle. So we can talk about the economic or the fiscal benefits of a project, we can talk about the social benefits in terms of, you know, when the Spectrum Building went up with the Mad Fox inside of it, that became a great community gathering space. When you go there on a weekend, it's flooded with people having brunch. Well, you couldn't do that before that building existed. And the same thing happened when the Harris Teeter went up, that now half the city's population is within a half a mile walking distance of a new grocery store. So those are certainly social benefits and there are others as well, things like affordable housing that gets created as part of those projects. And lastly, environmental, that when you look at one of these new buildings and you compare it to one of the old, that the old buildings were developed at a time when you didn't have to do anything with your stormwater. So when these new projects are going in, they're providing that. These projects are being built in a more environmentally sustainable way. And certainly when you look at a regional scale, there is a strategy at the regional level that calls for focused development and activity centers. Instead of building an endless sort of expansive development into the agricultural lands and the greenfields, there is a strategy of controlled or paced development in activity centers like Falls Church that can have real benefits at a regional scale.
Mr. Lickenhouse, did you have something?
Paul, this is great, man, thanks.
Oh, thank you.
A lot of feedback. I know you've been commended by numerous folks, but a lot of work here. I'm going to assume that my trout fishing idea got wrapped up in an update to natural resources, it's in there. It's buried deep into that, but it's insinuated, I get it.
Catfish.
Catfish, well, catfish and trout, depending. That'll be for the latter part of my term, we'll make that a priority. Yeah, so one of the, the neighborhood traffic calming for me is something that I think is an absolute must, that should be put in there. One of the biggest things for me, and maybe the intent has really already been designed into this, is the idea of accountability. So I know you've got lead department, lead border commission. I'm a big believer in assigning accountability to an individual. And I don't know if that's implied when you have lead department, but knowing that there's an individual that answers for the progress associated with some of these. So what's the, I mean, what's the game plan there in terms of assigning that accountability to an individual that comes before council or, you know, the various entities that are looking for updates?
Sure. Wyatt, I might ask you to weigh in on this in terms of structure of the government and reporting out.
Mr. Lickenhouse, that'll be the discussion that we have at our staff retreat on this on Thursday. But in that process, I think we will need to operationalize the things that are in this chart so that when we, when the things are there and someone's responsible for it, they understand what it is, what the program is, you know, what it is they're doing. And so that, you know, I think that's the discussion we'll be having when we get together.
Okay. Yeah, that's something I look forward to. I think that's one of the most effective ways to make sure that we actually get this done, is to assign that individual accountability. In terms of, in terms of costs associated with this, after you guys, Mr. Shields, I guess you call it, operationalize this and we start to put some numbers behind it, at what point do we get insight into exactly what resources and expenses are going to be associated with these various projects? I know you say that there's, you know, it's really not, it doesn't impact the budget per se, other than the individual, some of the individual line items, but do we start to get insight into what each one of these costs? And you start with the first one, just beautification around flower baskets, meaning is that money already set aside? What is that going to cost? And do we start to get those specific numbers so we can further refine and prioritize some of these?
So that discussion will start with the budget discussion. So that will be presented on March 12th, and I think the council will be looking at the budget to see where your priorities are and how they're funded or the extent that they're funded.
Okay.
So in my response to Ms. Hardy, you know, their flower baskets and lights sort of at the, at the level that you see now are in, you know, that's now being supported at the, you know, with the dedicated revenue. And that's going to grow over time, but it's going to grow at $60,000 per year, that's the level of effort for those types of things. Wayfinding, that's going to need to be a new budget discussion. There are other ones, NTC, I think, when we present budget, that we're going to have, you'll see that we've made a lot of progress on the neighborhood traffic calming, at least in terms of getting funding for it. So I think there'll be good things and I think there'll be things where we might have to do some more work after budget is presented.
Yeah, I would say, this may go without saying, but I just want to make sure that we emphasize, we're on the precipice of undertaking some massive capital projects. I want to make sure that we are leaving ourselves enough room, both in terms of staff resources, obviously money, and prioritization to make sure that we can pull those off so we're not fighting off more than we can chew. And I would assume that we're building that into these projects, knowing that if we need to throttle how fast some of them are moving in light of what may or may not be taking place from a capital perspective, that we leave ourselves with the ability to do that. I don't want to send folks off on, you know, a path to where we're spending money and we're going down this, this road to undertake some of these when, you know, we may need to bring some people back, rein them in a little bit to deal with some, maybe some unforeseen issues related to the capital.
Thank you for making that comment, and we need to be very mindful of that as we're thinking about what we want to get done in the next two years. With the CIP, with Cindy's leadership in working with Public Works, we've really tried hard to assign staff resources to the CIP so that it's financially feasible, but it's also, we can implement it. What we've done in the past, we've tried to put so much in the CIP that it actually slows everything down. And we get less done than if we just said, let's focus. And that's going to be true for this discussion also.
I think one of the things we'll probably have, at least my sense of the director's retreat, is that part of the conversation we'll have is, is do you have capacity in your draft budget to carry out these items while leaving the resources you need on the major efforts?
Yeah, and I'd personally like to know if you come back after the director's retreat and say, hey, listen, you know, we sat down, we put people into these specific buckets, we looked at the total resources that exist, what we're able to handle, and even though we want to prioritize these and we dotted these during the retreat and we looked, because these are on the left and we think we can accomplish those, there's just some of these that we can't get done. I think that, I want to make sure that we have a very, you know, sobering discussion about what's, what we're able to achieve and what we're not able to achieve, and certainly not at the expense of some of the things that, you know, can impact the city in the long run.
The other advantage we have is that it is a two and a half year document, so it may be that some of these things don't happen in the first quarter or the first two quarters, but we do have 10 quarters in which to start making some progress.
I have a feeling those 10 quarters are going to go fast, though, yeah.
And we are, you know, the last work plan, we're, a lot of that is still in the staff work plan to get those things done, and need to be mindful of that also.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Some more specific feedback after I got through my general ones earlier. I'll, like I go, what Mr. Lickenhause said around, I think, I think of it as my former project management days is run the engine capacity, so reserving however much capacity you need to just do business as usual, right? To get the CIP done, get city government running. So being clear on how much capacity we need to reserve for that is good, because I think when we look at this, we're like, oh, these are all important city priorities, but not realizing how much time it actually takes to get the basics done too. So let's be cognizant of that. The other comment, besides just putting a name next to it, something for council to consider, is whether we actually want to assign a council member on any of these. Because I know that some of us have passion on certain things. I know I'd love to see lights up and down Broad Street, and I've been very open about that, but I don't have to be the light person, though, that said. So again, if that is helpful, you know, for staff to actually be able to talk to.
All in favor of letting you be the light person.
If it is helpful for staff to go back to, hey, you know, you're the lead council person on this party, I can come to you for feedback and input as opposed to trying to get seven of us, if that's helpful for getting more work done, that might be something to consider. Going back to the affordability, vulnerability, accessibility bucket, whether we do this as a subheading, but I'd actually suggest that we pull out all the revenue economic development stuff in its own thing, because I worry that by keeping it in there, it actually dilutes the conversation we had around the vulnerable population. So we talked about kind of seniors, long-term residents, low incomes. I think things that are missing in there are disabled, refugee, at-risk, essentially populations that are targeted frankly by the current presidential administration. So I think there's more we can do there. And I think by lumping things in, like revenue up 5%, it dilutes what we want to get done there. So I suggest either pull out altogether so it doesn't mix in there or some framing in a different way. Another thing that was missing for me that we didn't discuss as much about, but within core government services, is a topic around efficiency. I think it's an expectation that we're running efficiently, but I would love to see, and I guess we talk about it every budget season, but maybe it should be a council priority, because we talk about it every budget season, and we kind of say, well, these are some areas we think we could, you know, get more efficient at, but we frankly just don't put a lot of work into it, and I think it's going to be more important now than ever. So I suggest actually some work around that under core government services around efficiency. And then the last thing, something from my, actually, third grader, is they are setting goals at TJ, and they use their acronym SMART goals, Smart, Measurable, Accountable, et cetera. Something for us to think about is whether we actually want to put goals around these things, whether it's metrics or, you know, is it just get this done by the end of 2019, 2020? But how do we actually make this kind of come alive besides kind of themes? Because, for example, vibrancy, yes, vibrancy is kind of great, but how do we make that a SMART goal, right? What do we want Falls Church to look like and feel like by X date? You know, is it X number of things done along that line, whatever it may be? So again, something for staff to think about in the department retreat as well. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. In terms of efficiency and the idea of, like you said, operationalizing some of these things, making sure we can measure whether we, are you looking for a report? Are you looking for some specific measure of sort of tax dollar savings? What's the, what's the intent?
All of the above. I would love to see us put more meat behind efficiency. So whether it's, you know, operating savings, whether it's, you know, certain departments that we think that we can lean out. Again, I hate the term do more with less, because that's just generic, right? Like what's the, what's the actual savings? How are we saving people money? How are we doing more work? Are we combining departments? Are we finding efficiencies? I don't, I mean, HR is not a great example, because we're just making Cindy do more. But, you know, is there real efficiency, for example, by thinking about school board and city general government operations, right? Can HR departments be aligned across those two departments? We've talked about it for years. Maybe we actually start thinking about how to make that happen and does it actually have some real savings in the end? There's a couple other departments that I won't pick on, but along those lines, I think, for me, I think it'd be all of them. It's probably worth a good council discussion whether they think efficiency should fall in efficient government operations.
Okay, other comments? Mr. Snyder?
I'll just address one cluster of issues which relate to technology, particularly with regard to transportation. And that's, there's several proposals that are scattered about here. I continue to think that a city council planning commission, private sector, city staff effort is something that would be well worth our, our time at. It does tend to be longer, but I'd like to see us set up the structure and begin gathering information sooner rather than later. And I do realize that it tends to be long-term, but are there some, are there some things we can be going after in terms of pilot testing that we should really focus on in the short term? But if you believe the literature, there are dramatic changes that are not that far off, changes every bit as significant as when we moved to cars in the 1950s, which continue to characterize the city in ways both positive and negative. What I'd like to do is to try to get ahead of that, to see how we can make it serve us rather than we serve it. So I would appreciate a specific action in the near future to begin that, that collective data gathering. And I think the private sector is fundamental, tapping into the expertise our citizens have. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
I agree with Ms. Hardy that we need a bucket called Economic Development, because, that's what you said, right? Yeah. It needs to come out. It's in about four or five different places. I just start all the areas where economic development was, but I think it needs to be focused. We need to have an economic development bucket. And then my, what about safety? Do we have anything in here about the safety of our community? Is that under resilience and sustainability? Would that, could that be there?
It could be. One of the things I think, I think you're probably already going in this direction, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing, that if this is a change document, I know from the draft work we've done in the community profile, the city tends to rank as a very high-performing community in terms of public and physical safety. So are there particular aspects of safety that have come up recently?
Nationally, yes, not in Falls Church specifically, but I feel like they're just issues that are floating around that local governments need to be tuned into. And that we just need, is it an annual safety audit of all of our buildings? Is it a, or are street crossings? Or what's the responsiveness to things that happen in schools, in public buildings, in parks? And I don't know where that, it seems like resilience and sustainability, but I'm not quite sure. Or is it core government services?
That could be seen as a public health and safety issue, which generally gets, I think, lumped under core government services in terms of protecting and promoting public health.
Right. So again, I don't know what the act, the action items would be related to that. But I think in the national context, we need to at least be tied into it. And then my last question is, how are we doing on our work plan that we're finishing up right now? When was the last time we got a report on that?
The last report you had on that was actually in the summer.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of green on that report. I mean, there were a lot of accomplishments. We have got a report that is, got sidelined, I think, partly with other things, but of putting out a year-end report that is, is the city of Falls Church in facts. And so it would have demographics and have information that people would want to go to one place to find, but it also has what got, what was accomplished in the last year. And we need to just put the finishing touches on that, and I think that'll be a helpful document.
It might be nice next time, when you come back in two weeks, to have the previous work plan and where we are on it too, just to be able to compare the two and see what we plan to do and accomplished and what comes next and what's sliding along.
Absolutely.
So what you just said reminded me of something else that I talked with manager about and would wonder if we could bring up here. Vulnerable populations was referred to. to earlier. You know, public health also relates not only to, you know, physical safety against threats of the sort that I think that we all think about, but, you know, Falls Church's role in the, call it what you will, Me Too, Woke, you know, Time's Up, you know, the populations which are finding their voice and, literally, you know, marching in the streets to achieve change. And we seem uniquely attractive to groups like that, because we feel that way, you know, as a community. And our high school, you know, was available for the demonstration, you know, with less red tape and paperwork than maybe other schools, and that's all good. And we want to encourage that, because it brings more people into the city and creates awareness of our uniqueness here, our authenticity. There is an element to, I think we're up to about one march every six weeks now, for one reason or another. And there is a public safety cost associated with each of those mobilizations that we need to think about in terms of budget impact. I mean, if we are, and I think we should become a place where, you know, we march on Martin Luther King Day, we march on, you know, Women's History Month, we march, we have a big public event around Memorial Day, obviously, Fourth of July, Fall Festival is a big thing. You know, we've got something going on New Year's Eve. Up to now, I don't know that there's a, like, separate budget item for public demonstrations and activities. But I'm thinking there probably ought to be, so that we, you know, make sure we have the resources to staff those things adequately and safely. So that's, that's something that could move to the left in anything that we're doing. It's not new necessarily, but it is sort of new. I mean, just in a fairly short time, we've moved from two or three major events a year to, like I say, it seems like we're doing something about every six weeks of some fair civic significance, which has some tremendous benefits, but also some costs associated with it.
Let me ask you, did she have something you want to say?
I've heard the Reagan Parks Director talk about kind of needing a special events budget to handle things like that, because I think he'd like to be more involved in helping to program some of those things, but can't currently, because we can really only pull off Memorial Day and the Fall Festival. So whether it's just a budget item we need to support, but I think, like, Mardi Gras was one, where the community was, you know, really excited to do it, but we couldn't do much beyond provide, like, the public safety and closing of roads.
Let me ask you...
And more specifically, we didn't have any funding to close roads or provide public safety. I mean, we budget for a set number of events with a little bit of flex, but if people are coming to us once a month with a special request, which they are now, we're trying to figure out how to handle that.
Mr. Snyder, let me ask you, the vibrancy theme, do you view that as really like a downtown vibrancy, or do you categorizing that as sort of everything together? It was a little unclear from looking at the chart.
The, so there was some thought put into how to bucket some of these things, that with five or six categories and a host of work plan items, sometimes it was a stretch to include some of the specific items. I think around the retreat, a lot of the items being discussed were specific to downtown. But then, when staff looked into, how do we categorize some of these things, that vibrancy seemed to be a better fit than other places. And so sometimes that stretched outside of downtown, and it generally incorporated things in the commercial areas generally, but also marketing strategies to attract people to the commercial areas of the city.
Okay. Anything else we have from Mr. Snyder? He's supposed to leave, I guess, about now. Anyone have any last thoughts for him before he took off? All right, thank you very much. Sounds like you got to head to the Planning Commission, but thanks for your good work on this. I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. This is, I think this is good feedback. We can take this as a positive message to the Director's Retreat, that we generally heard the right thing with some adjustments. And we'll bring back that information that you all are looking for to your next work session.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shields. Before we move on to the next item, too, with respect to lights, are we going to have St. Patrick's lights in the next couple of days, green lights in downtown? Okay. And when are those going to be turning on? Just out of curiosity, do we know?
On St. Patrick's Day.
We don't do it any before, like the week before?
It's special. You want to do it on the special day. Now, we could...
We got green, but that was planted in the past.
Yeah. I think the plan was just on the day, but...
What do you all think? Imagine, can't they turn the switch on if we wanted to a little earlier? That's what I think. I think do it for the week.
Yeah, well, there's that.
Okay. I mean, maybe give some thoughts the whole week. All right, what did you have? You wanted to give us an update, or we would like to hear, I think, an update on what happened with the power outage and Dominion's response and city response. Thank you. I know there's been a lot of dissatisfaction with Dominion's turnaround time, I think, with their power outage, but why don't you give us a little more information, if you could?
Well, I will state that as of present, based on the outage map, there are 11 customers out of power in the city right now. At the height of the storm, or on Friday, we peeked out at about 50% of the city was off the grid. The, so this was a major event for Virginia Power. I think they had, as of Saturday, the day after the event, they still had a quarter of a million people out in Fairfax, Alexandria, Arlington, Falls Church, in the northern Virginia area. Some of the major issues we dealt with is, is when we do have events like this, our 911 dispatch gets flooded with calls. And it makes it, you know, a lot of people are just calling to report power outages or wires down, which is important that we get that. But when we get multiple calls on it, it does then start to bog down our 911 dispatch to be able to take calls that might relate to other matters. And that's just, that's a feature of the large dispatch centers, as well as our very small dispatch center. So a lot of our messaging was, you know, for people to communicate directly with Dominion Power, certainly for power outages. And that's, that's normal for events like this, that we try to keep pushing that messaging out. We did have, in our 911 dispatch, we had issues with Verizon as well, and that was tree and wind-related. We were getting calls into dispatch, but we were not able to place calls out. So we were obviously working with our radios for the immediate dispatch, but in terms of being able to make phone calls, that was an issue that we were dealing with on the, on Friday.
How long did that last? Just a half an hour or so?
No, that lasted for about four hours.
Well, it actually is still continuing. The peak of the, the speaker's too close to me, sorry, it's feedback. The peak of the time that Mr. Shields is talking about for the Verizon windstorm issue was about four hours, but we actually started having citywide phone issues, including dispatch prior. And my update from IT this evening is it's still not totally resolved. We're actually getting spammed by a fax machine. And so it was overloading our calls for going outbound. And then you call in all the 911, and it just peaked it to beyond capacity. So we're actually still working to block the rolling fax numbers that are spamming us as a cyber attack.
Could I follow up? Could I follow up? Correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things we're doing with the renovations in City Hall is hardening our utility sort of capabilities. Will you comment on that? And if not, we ought to be. So, yeah.
We are. That will be both for the meters and feeds into the facility, to a consolidated one vault box and good conduit feeds. It will also be some redundancy internally. And we also have stood up a off-site co-location with multi-jurisdictions and utilities, not in the city limits, so that if we lose this core, we can revert and have a redundant path around. Always glad to go into more detail, because that gets to security of our routing and our redundancy. Would prefer to do that in closed session. But I can definitely assure you that during the project, that's...
I couldn't agree anymore. I know one of the lessons that we learned from some of the earlier, when we were running, what, constant string of natural things like this, that, that was something we definitely set out to do. And I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward with it.
And we have, of course, from derecho and from Sandy, been working with our utility companies, Verizon in particular, for their central office hubs, for their redundancy in generators, and also with Dominion. They've done a lot of reinvestment into their capital at the two substations that feed the city. They're outside, as well as working with a lot of the transformers and grounding inside. And for City Hall in particular, did a redundant path. And so we haven't gone down like we used to.
Thank you.
A couple other things I'll just note from the event. I should have really started with this. From a public safety perspective, we had no injuries that were directly storm-related, and we had no staff injuries in response. So we're very pleased with that. Sometimes, though, you just get lucky. We had two trees on homes in the city, and those are obviously very dangerous situations, and we're very thankful that we avoided injury on that. We had a light signal, a traffic signal sheer off and fall into the street. That could have killed somebody. So we're very thankful that that didn't happen. We have a temporary arrangement. This is at the intersection of Hillwood and Annandale. So we have a temporary arrangement there. We'll get a pole up, I think, soon on a temporary basis, and then a permanent replacement. It's going to take a longer period of time. It's also going to be expensive. We're working with VDEM now on what's possible in terms of reimbursements, and we don't have anything conclusive yet on that. The other probably expensive damage there at the property yard, the property that's leased to Fairfax Water, its roof blew off, or a big chunk of it did. Under our terms of our lease, the city is responsible for capital expenditures for the property, CapEx, which includes the shell of the building. That would be covered by insurance, but we will, we believe, we'll be working through that as a claim. And as well as Virginia Department of Emergency Management. I will note that the library was completely full on Friday and Saturday, as people came to charge their phones. And so we were glad to be able to, and some to stay warm. But that is traditionally what we do with our public facilities. Community Center also was very full. And, and we like that. We like people to come, and glad we could provide that, that service, and that we were open for that. And so in terms of, we will do a staff after action, and we're going to be working through the financial dimensions of this as we go forward.
Mr. Shields, I was wondering if I could mention a little bit about Dominion Coordination?
Yeah.
So throughout the storm, as soon as it was known, Dominion reached out, confirmed numbers. They were available to us through their Regional Operations Center as we needed to do priorities. And of course, we did have some priorities in terms of sunrise, the number of houses out, the traffic signals. And so they were responsive to our request for prioritizing our issues. It still meant that there was triaging, and it took a significant amount of time to get done. But I did want you to know that they were available to us every time we needed to call. Our biggest issue for the outage of the city was that the Falls Church substation had a major breaker issue, and so it took the entire substation out, which took out 2,000 of the city's accounts, because we're fed by two stations. And so that was a two-day repair job for them. And halfway through, half came back on. The half that came back on fortunately included sunrise.
Mr. Lichtenhouse, then Ms. Hardy?
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's a miracle when you had two houses, I mean, two trees down on houses. It was a vicious windstorm. Do we, with our city arborist, is there a program in place, or do we have protocol in place, where our arborist or folks of Public Works look at trees that are more susceptible to losing limbs, or maybe aren't cared for in the way that they should, that could be causing harm to a neighbor's property? And this is speaking from someone that has two cars sitting in the parking lot of caliber collision, is completely out of commission because of, because of limbs. I know we only have one arborist, and that's a, it's a heavy lift, but is that something that is open to the public, for them to come over and look at trees that may be susceptible, or things that could be a danger to neighbors in a windstorm?
The responsibility for the arborist is to take care of the city trees, so that's street trees and park trees. And for private trees, they are generally going to refer you to an arborist. And, and what you can do, if you have a concern about a neighbor's tree, is to get an arborist, and they can make an opinion as to its status. What we have found, you know, by policy, the city arborist doesn't do that work. There have been instances in the past where, in the past, where to be neighborly or to be helpful, they have done so, and that has provoked a big fight and a big liability issue. And we think it's actually not best for the neighbor if we get involved, and rather, that is a private matter, and it's best resolved that way. So that's, that's something we do have a kind of a long history on.
No, that's fine. Just curious.
Yeah.
I would like to take the opportunity that the city does invest in its trees, and you see that in your annual budget. And I think that we saw that. I mean, our crews are out there working pretty regularly to try to take care of our street trees, and I think we saw some of the fruits of that in a big storm like this.
I had a question about the Annandale-Hillwood intersection. I know that traffic patterns are there are changed while we've got no light there. Does the South Wash, could we extend the South Washington work and money further down, so that it could help with that intersection?
We're going to have to reallocate funds in the CIP, I think, because I'm not sure we can count on VDEM money, and I don't think we're going to be able to get insurance money, and we're going to need to fix the intersection. So we'll be coming back to council with some reallocation requests.
It will not be South...
I don't think the South Washington money...
It will not be South Washington money, based on the funding sources. So what we'll have to look at is our intersection funding, that we have this revenue sharing, and whether under the current scope, or because of the emergency, we can get it re-appropriated.
Because that intersection for pedestrians isn't great as it is, and so I don't know if we could just take the opportunity to work on, especially as we anticipate all the opening next year. You know, that's going to be more busy and more heavy pedestrian used.
That intersection always was on the to-do list. It just wasn't on the media, because we were going to finish all the way down to South Maple. So it definitely has some work to do.
Why wouldn't that be covered by insurance, the casualty?
The traffic signal pole piece would be, but to do that whole intersection as planned, we need to do all of the poles, because the other two are very precarious. And your curbs, your ramps, your turning radius, that needs to be narrowed and aligned. All of that will not be under insurance, if we're going to do it right.
Sure.
So we're also looking at, I know the Public Works Director is reviewing options for phasing, you know, get the safety fees, of course, safety for walking on the poles, and then not preclude future work.
I would say, too, when you do the pole, it'd be great to upgrade to some kind of acorn style or something, because it really looks industrial, and I think makes it so people don't really want to walk there. It doesn't feel pedestrian-friendly, just by the style of the fixtures and the like.
And that's a nuance, where I could get insurance to cover the core, but if we're going to upgrade it to a certain standard, then we're going to need to be able to pay the delta. And we're hoping that some of our traffic signal revenue sharing money can be used, because you've already matched the 50% to it. But there's some grant reviews we got to get through, too. In the meantime, we have approved the requisition for a temporary signal today, and so the order's been placed. Still needs about a week, and it still won't be full signalization. It's still going to not have all the turns that the communities used to. And as a side note, we're working with WAMADA to reroute the buses, because the buses are having trouble getting through that intersection now.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Duncan.
We're going to heart tartar's kids with flags to, you know, control the, on vulnerable populations. Did the emergency generator at Winter Hill that we celebrated the installation of get pressed into service this time or not?
You know, the wonderful thing is, we did not hear from Winter Hill. So I think that is...
Must mean everything was okay.
That is success. My assumption is that it did. But I didn't, I didn't hear from Winter Hill that they had power outages, to tell the truth.
Interesting. Well, no news is good news. And sunrise, Cindy, you mentioned, that's a private sector play, obviously, but are they going to be prepared for the next such situation with their own better upgraded equipment?
Yeah, they'll need to upgrade. They actually had installed a generator after our last major event, and so... They actually had installed a generator after our last major event, and so they were much more prepared in the past, but it couldn't do the full facility for a long period of time. And so they brought in a portable diesel and bottled oxygen. So I know they're doing an after-action report, and our fire and police were regularly stopping by and checking in with them, and Tom Palera provided them some feedback on what they could research.
And the newer buildings, West Broad and, well, just let me ask, the newer buildings are equipped with generators. What about North Gate? North Gate is not.
North Gate is not, and that's, we want to make it a condition all the time. It's not required by code, but for buildings like that, it's just not good for public safety if the power goes out and you have 100 households that now are in a precarious situation. We need to find alternate lounging or whatever the case may be. So at a minimum, to power elevators, water, emergency lighting.
And the current approvals, your emergency manager has been putting that in for negotiations. North Gate was one prior to that.
Right, that's 10 years ago now. So is there any discussions we can have to encourage them to do that, or is that sort of a market-driven thing that if the word gets out that you get stuck in the elevator there, that that's bad for business, and so they'll invest in equipment?
We could persuade them, but that'd be the nature of it, that we try to persuade them.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Mr. Shields, Vice Mayor Conlon?
Oh, I forgot what I was going to say. There, the people that are still without power, oh, I know, I was going to say, thank you to the Communications Department. They did a very good job on social media of getting that information out there. I felt like I saw it in a variety of ways. It was easy to read and understand, easy to repost and get people aware of what was going on. So I thought they did a very nice job.
Yes. Susan Fenarelli and Claire do a great job on.
The 12 households that are without power, has anyone looked in on them to make sure they're okay?
I'm going off of the outage map, and they're actually, it says they're on right around Greenway Downs. And so I'm going to go by there on the way home just to check.
I think Greenway Downs is okay.
Yeah, I think the last I had heard from Dominion, we were back up, but sometimes people will pop in and out, too, as they do the final restoration. So the only neighborhood that did a dedicated reach out after everybody else was up was Buxton, and we had that road down, and that was a long repair in terms of getting to the triage, and Dominion had them completed it, too, this afternoon.
Right. Okay. I just, I heard some stories of people who, like, didn't have a place to go, and some people were friends and just, and I'm not quite sure what the responsibility of the city is for a homeowner who doesn't have power, but if there's a way to poke in and look at them all and make sure it was okay. I'm just wondering if that, if that could be part of your action report, I guess, to those people that have been out for two days, three days.
Yep. All of the hotels in the city were full.
Yeah.
Were all, so all the hotels were up and running?
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Shields?
I just have one. I'd be interested in, after we take a look at it, whether Virginia Power really did the job they were supposed to do. So I know it was challenging, but.
They've been doing twice-a-day conference calls, and they're to do an after-action report regionally for themselves.
There's been a lot of communication, but has the action been to the level that we should?
Yep. And so that'll be, once they finish everything, we can assess that. They have offered to come out and do an after-action with us once they've finished their analysis. So Mr. Shields and I had discussed that we would schedule that.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Shields?
If I could just mention, the schools were great in coordinating with us also to make sure that we knew what their needs are and call in the work order. So Jesse Thackeray was the last one to come up, but that was also because of the Falls Church substation.
Okay. Mr. Shields, do you have anything else for us?
I think that's it.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Shields? Anything else for us? Any scheduled discussion anyone wants to have? Anything else? Should we go ahead?
Can I have one thing?
Sure.
Is that, who's going to the Chamber of Commerce Gala this weekend? All right. So it is the hottest ticket in town. The Chamber of Commerce Gala is Saturday night.
Thank you, council.
Go ahead and adjourn, then? Let's do it.